And before we get started, I just want to tell everybody we've been having some difficulties. So I hope this meeting goes smoothly. I'm just warning you now.
Do you have any citizens comments?
Nobody's signed up, Mayor.
Then I'll move on to approval of the minutes.
I've moved to approve the minutes for the November eighth and November ninth workshop.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. That's his consent. And it's a long one.
Item A, I have reviewed the counts payable this afternoon and everything was in order. I don't know if you want to do anything on the others, Mayor.
The consent agenda is usually just done by one motion.
We've moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Aye.
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 Close. Moving on to special presentations. Lake Shalane Research Institute. Mr. Thornton and Mr. Long.
On, Mr. Phil Long is here to present our report on the year's activities and and the results of his research.
Thank you. Glad to be here for this opportunity that become an annual effort to let you know what we've been doing with the funding that you've been providing. And so this shows, oop, let's go back one. This just shows some of the interesting things we've been doing. There's a diver. He's he's part of a dash effort. Diver assisted suction harvesting for removing milfoil. This is some of the milfoil and some Chinese mystery snails. That's really a thing in the lake. Some larger ones than we had seen before. This is at Minneapolis Beach. So the usual update here with the usual suspects plus others. And again, thank you for the opportunity to talk with us with you today. I recognize that this is Thanksgiving week and you probably all have other things that you might well be doing on a Tuesday evening before Turkey Day on Thursday. So we'll try to make this fairly straightforward. I know that I don't need to belabor this point. We all know what's at stake with the lake and its water quality, and I won't belabor this point, but I do want to use it as kind of a point in this discussion where we can just step back and talk about what's happened and why the city's role in this has been so important. So if you go back to 2016, that was the last year of a nine-year period during which there were precisely zero water quality measurements made on Lake Shalane. I know that's still stunning to me, but it happened. And we're clear into the future with Lake Shalane Research Institute. We are part of our goal is to make sure that kind of gap in data never occurs again. So starting in 2017, the city made a commitment of five years. There was a no-cost extension for $100,000. The the total was $100,000, $20,000 a year, total of six years in the end. And that's just extraordinary for us because what that did, we could go to other parties and say, did you know the city of Shalane is supporting this and they've made a five-year commitment? It's made a huge difference. And when we get to the ask at the end, which I think you all know what it is, we will, it has the same effect going forward for that for a five-year period. Okay, so here's the outline of the presentation. And what's in blue or in dark type is what I'm going to talk about. This things in gray, I'm not going to talk about in a significant way. So that, but the point being, we can get through this in a little faster way. So this just shows what you can find now as a result of some of the work that we did this past summer with employee number one Bella Gatzemeyer of Lake Shalane Research Institute, funding from the icicle fund. They gave us 25K to look at nearshore water temperature. So this is from this morning, but you can go on the website, lakeshalaneresearchinstitute.org and see within an hour, two hours, something like that, what the current temperature is between the two bridges, if you will, on the river channel above the dam. So it's it's there, plus some other water quality data. You get this 48-hour plot. Those are dark blue is the nighttime period, daytime in white, and you can just see the trends. And so this is just something we haven't had before as easily. You could delve into some of the PUD websites and find some temperature data that's that was live. But this is this is where people know this is. And what we want to do is build this out. So we have more of these and more people can look at the the temperature i- in real time. And so that's great. So I'll, I will talk about the hypolimnetic oxygen depletion. We'll talk about algae and the nearshore water temperature nutrient sources. We want to do a beach cleanup, which I won't talk about in April 2023. Invasive species, a test of dash. We'll talk about that a little bit. And then Lisa Dowling from the county is working very hard on getting voluntary boat inspections going for 2023. And then hopefully that will become mandatory in 2024. So that's an important thing that, again, we're not we didn't have time to go into, but there'll be other opportunities for you to learn about that going forward. Stormwater management, I want to talk about that. That's a very important thing. That's, we had an incident on November 12th that everybody needs to be aware of, and we need to be able to do that. And there's the request 25K per year for five years going forward. We'll talk about that at the end, and I'll be able to answer your questions. So we don't really need to have this slide in here, but it's just to remember the context along Skinny Lake. It creates some issues. If you look at Flathead Lake, it's basically equent. They go to one spot out in the middle of it and they analyze that spot to death year, month after month, year after year, usually 18 times a year. We have a much different setting. It's very difficult to get further up the lake. Most of our work is done down here in the in the Okay, so this is the promised slide on AHOD, aerial hypolimnetic oxygen deficit. And without going into detail, this is the most sensitive measure that we have out in the middle of the lake for how much nutrients are coming in to the system. Basically, what we're doing is we're looking at 100 meters depth in the Wapato Basin. This is so-called Site Four. And this is the new data point. Actually, there's only a handful of people who have seen this yet. I just analyzed the data from this past year yesterday. And so it's fairly significant. It's not higher than what it has been. And this is the the data here overall, going back to 1987 for the notion that the lake is actually doing very well, very stable in terms of nutrient inputs. Now, of course, we don't have a lot of data here. And that's why we want to keep these points going forward. We're missing two years, 20 was a COVID year, 21. We lost the probe that we make these measurements with, and thank you for your support in helping us replace that probe because that's what this new data point for 2022 is based on. So two things about it. One, it's just slightly higher, probably sensibly no different from 2019, and it has slightly higher uncertainty bars. It's just the nature of the data. We don't quite understand that. My son is visiting from Seattle area. He works for the Allen Institute for Brain Science, and he was explaining to me, Dad, here's what you need to do to get the uncertain, to sort out the uncertainty and why this is different than these other two. So thanks, Brian. Appreciate that. So I want to talk about the whole issue of attached nearshore algae. It's become very significant in that we seem to, in 2022, have crossed a threshold whereby everybody notices this that has spends any time on the lakeshore and particularly people who have lakeshore homes. And so we got lots of calls from different sources. Sometimes it was the website. Sometimes it was people who got in touch with the PUD and they sent them to us. And we went and went up, I wound up going and talking to a lot of different people. Probably half a dozen or more individual sites. This happens to be A22 dock at Sunset Marina, and I have never seen it with as much fuzz. Green fuzz, if you will, as it had during this past year. This is our probe that's collecting data. We use this to do the profiles that get that 100-meter depth in the basin once a month typically. Here it just sits collecting data every 15 minutes, but look at this stuff. This is the piling here. And one thing that is present here is a breakwater, not too far, just across a little, maybe 20 yards away. That's available to the public. Nobody goes out there in a significant way. So it's full of waterfowl, particularly seagulls. And I think that explains part of what we see here. But does it explain all that? We don't know enough about that. And I think we've talked about this Robin Matthews things and the fact that nothing is likely to cause major harmful algal blooms. But there is another thing we'll talk about, which is filamentous algal blooms, which are much more common now in in Western US lakes. In fact, globally, it's more common. And well, that's the subject of a project that's going to be funded by the PUD that we'll talk about in a minute. But part of what could be causing the scum on the swim step that people complain about and other kinds of things is just a gradual rise in temperature. And so one of the things we knew we did not have, and it's, I woke up one day and realized, oh, we should have been monitoring the nearshore temperature since we started this effort in 2016, 2017. But you know, there's no time like the present. So that's when we made the application to the the icicle fund. They gave us 20, they give us a grant for $25,000 to do this work. This is Bella Gatzemeyer. This is her 3D printing work. She learned to do this in Shalane High School. She's now a sophomore at UW in data science. She was ideal for this job. And so it is a key factor. We know that, but we have very little long-term data. And so now we're getting it. We will now. If you look at the next slide, this is where the blue checks are where we have data at this moment, little tidbits. They're called, or various names by hobo that collect data every half an hour. So we have all this data. So what that enables us to do is to look at a point in time and say, how are different parts of the nearshore environment different? We don't have these all installed yet. The the white circles, white dots are places we still intend to put more of these in. People want to have this data. So it turns out the homeowners can download that with Bluetooth on their phone. They take it out of the water and download it. They can get the temperature. They can see the plot. And some of them really like that, then they email us the data. Others, we have to go out and download. But in general, there's a lot of interest in this simple measurement. And of course, we want to build on that and explain to people that, oh, well, we can do other measurements if you can support this effort. So it's a way to plug into to the, and the whole idea of that one of the icicle fund efforts is to connect people in place. I think that's why they funded this. By the way, this is the first icicle fund project, as far as I know, that's ever been funded in the Shalane area and for which we're we're grateful, obviously. So so what about beyond temperature? Obviously, that's probably not the only thing that's going on. So we proposed to the Public Power Benefit Project. 90K a year for three years, 270K total to look at this whole issue. And at the end of that time, we think we'll have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. We hope we don't just generate more questions than we come up with answers. But we're very excited about this. And so we're in the planning process for this. And we hope that it's a beginning of a more continuous, larger research effort. And because of this, the city's contribution as a fraction is actually dropping significantly. So that's a good thing, we think. But this just shows the tube that holds this probe that we use. And this is after it's been in the water for just a month. It looks, it was, we cleaned it off really well. It was white PVC when it went in. It looks like this after a month's time. So that's the kind of thing that we're talking about. And so we want to be able to quantify that. One of the exciting things is we think that we will bring a small workshop together on these FABs for Lake Shalane. And that we'll do something called a bio blitz, which is, we'll have a bunch of scientists, they will bring their tools, and they will make measurements, sort of a snapshot of what's going on in Lake Shalane. We hope that puts us on the map from a science standpoint and gets greater interest so that people bring their funding to help help study this problem. So it turns out, as I mentioned earlier, this is not unique to Lake Shalane. In fact, you could pretty clearly say that Lake Tahoe is worse off in this regard than we are. And I'll show you a picture of that. But Yvonne Vedabunkur published and a bunch of others, and this was interestingly enough, this came from a workshop, this review paper. It's actually fairly accessible to read. So anybody who wants it, I'm happy to send you the PDF. But basically, they looked at this emerging issue of, and and this is something that is a global thing that's happening to clear lakes. You know, if you're, if you've got a muddy lake that's got lots of algae growing in it already, you're not so concerned. This is not new, right? But if you're clear, and then some of these things start to happen like they see at Lake Tahoe, where look at the green stuff on the bottoms, and hence this this title, green bottoms, blue waters, green bottoms. And so imagine as a tourist, you're camping, and this is Marla Bay in Lake Tahoe, and you dip your toe into the green stuff. I mean, it's not that attractive, right? From are you going to come back to this place? Is that going to be your favorite spot? Well, maybe not. So there's some body of evidence. One of the things that's interesting about it is that there is not a standard protocol for making measurements. Like when we do go out to measure phosphorus, for example, in the middle of the lake, that's been developed for a long time. We know exactly what we need to do and how to do that. Measuring what's going on with these filamental, filamentous algal blooms is not is not set yet. So part of that standard will maybe come out of the work that the PUD is funding. So I want to give you also an example of private funding. We've gotten continuing interest. In this case, the question is, what is the impact of duck and goose feces on nearshore water quality? And so one is that a sort of it's, it's not exactly science in the sense that I haven't yet consulted with the bird counts that the Audubon Society does every year. But the notion is, if you talk to people like Joe Heinlein, Lakeshale Land Adventures, he's out on the lake all the time, almost every day of the year. And he claims that there are more waterfowl on the lake than there ever has been at any time in the past. So and so guess what? Waterfront resorts are most impacted. And if you talk to the people at at Lakeside Lodge, they will tell you all the details of what the flux is on people's shoes, on kids' clothing, on into their motel, right? I mean, it's just a huge problem. And and so Campbell's, and thanks to Art Campbell for actually putting this together. The lookout Lakeside Lodge in Wapato Point are all contributing to this measurement. And yes, that is a goose turd right there. And we're extracting the nitrate in distilled water here. And so what you can do then is you can look at the isotopic composition of nitrite, nitrate, and tell the difference of the nitrate source. Is it manure? Is it sewage? Is it chemical fertilizer? Or is it a more natural source just from the watershed? So that's the, it's a very powerful method. We, it could go bust. We don't have the data back quite yet. It's it's research, so we don't know how it's going to come out. It could all look like chemical fertilizer. We included a Perdaman Gulch or Perdaman Creek in this, which has notoriously high nitrate coming into the lake. So I would be surprised if that wasn't chemical fertilizer, but we got to let the data talk, and we'll let people know when we see that, when we get that data back. One of the things we probably need to do is change the way we dispose of waterfowl feces. So people have swim decks. They have docks. And what do they do? Or the marinas? They sweep it all off into the water. Or they pressure wash it off like Sunset Marina, they like to pressure wash. If you go to Lake Washington, that actually is not permitted. People go out, they send people out with bags to swim docks, swim islands or whatever. And they fill those bags and swim them back. So the question is, do we need to do that? Maybe this, well, we hope this study is going to help us decide. But if you think about what else is involved here in terms of E. coli and total coliform. And my thought is that some of the issues that the the owners of of resorts have relate to complaints from citizens about Swimmers Edge or people that are patronizing their facilities. Nobody's actually said that, but I'm guessing that that's a that's a significant issue. So this is the extraction process. We did this. We did some examples of trying to mimic what happens when you sweep things off. We still have to do the E. coli total coliform part, which we'll do when the weather warms up. Our system wasn't working for doing that. This, you have to filter the water. These were 0.2 micron filters. They were white when they started out. After you filter stuff that's been in contact with the goose poop, it turns green and you get this filtered color. So we're pretty excited about that. And but it's an example again of this is the the issues are so significant that private sources are willing to step up. And we're, we're very glad for that and glad that they came to us with, hey, Phil, can you help us with this issue? And the basic idea initially at least was, if this is affecting water quality, can't we get WDFW in here to help us reduce the waterfowl population? It turns out they legally hunt waterfowl on a regular basis out at Wapato Point. A little hard to do that in other parts, you know, in front of Campbell's, that might be an issue. But so we're again excited about the possibility of being able to contribute to that discussion. So diver assisted suction harvesting. Why would you do that? We have 520 acres of aquatic invasive species plants in the lake now from the 2021 survey. It probably varies year to year, and I think that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but not a whole lot. There's a lot of acreage covered with milfoil and or curly leaf pond weed in the lake. And so we wanted to look at dash as a test. Find out how it worked. We know, we knew going into it that it's very expensive. And you'll see what that looks like in a minute. But and one of the things we're able to do to take these pictures, by the way, we now have an underwater vehicle, Blue ROV2. And without going into details about that, how that works, it's available for both commercial work and for research. And we hope to improve it enough, harden it so that it can go to the bottom of the deepest part of Lake Shalane by the mid midsummer this coming year. So another exciting thing. People tell me that, well, Phil, it's going to be boring down at the, and I just say, well, what about when the great giant sturgeon drive swims by when you're on the bottom? It'll be more exciting then, right? So anyway, we'll see what we find. And there's a whole list of science things that we plan to do with this. And so again, we're always looking for support that would help us make this tool more capable. And but the pictures that you see, like on the title slide and right here, we're all taken with the ROV. But so it selectively removes invasive species. It decreases the toral biomass. Real-time observation of how well you're doing. It's likely one of multiple control methods that would be recommended in an integrated aquatic vegetation management plan, an IA VMP, which we still need to write for Lake Shalane and the the whole watershed. But that's a goal that we have going forward. What's going to work if we just ignore the 520 acres, it's only going to get worse. And eventually it will start to have a bigger impact than it probably already does for our ability to appreciate the lake. There are people who say, I I know a certain guy who tells me his kids will not swim in certain areas, namely around Wapato Point, because the milfoil tickles their toes and they don't like it. So it's already having an impact, but it's going to get worse unless we address it. So this just shows how we used aerial drones at Minneapolis Beach, and it's probably hard for you to see, but if you look right here, it's dark and right in this area, it's light. That's an area that was where the aquatic plants were removed. This is the Sorin's Cabana on Minneapolis Beach. And thanks to them, they were very nice to let us take the ROV out here, look at the whole system out until there were no, we went down to about 60 meters and where there were no plants growing. And so that that was a great opportunity for us to again, use the ROV. So here's the results, and I won't go into great detail on this. We we went to Key Bay and to Minneapolis Beach. Three and a half days, we removed 900 pounds. And this is what you get. Again, here's the Chinese mystery snails and lots of Asian clams actually in this stuff as well. We treated 0.8 acres. Remember, we got 500 acres to deal with, 520. And so if you just do run the numbers for what that cost, about $9.9 million to, if you could put enough dash units out to remove using dash. So that's probably out of reach. But on the other hand, if one looked at doing this over a 10-year period, we could probably gain a lot of efficiencies over the private contractor that did this for us. And so I think we need to look at this carefully, find out if we can get help from the state, from the feds, whatever, to fund some level of continuous removal at in the most significant areas, like the bays around Wapato Point, for example. It's a good place to start, I think. So one of the issues is, how fast does it regrow? Obviously, if you can't take it out fast enough, it just grows up behind you, then you're not making progress. And we don't know the answer. We'll be going back to like the Sorin's, for example, and some of the other places we treated and see what happens in 2023. And I think that also, you know, one needs to just consider where are those high priority and what are the other methods? So one of the other methods is to use a herbicide called Procelllicor. They're already using it actually in Roses Lake. And to reasonably good effect. But when you have your drinking water intake right next to where the all the weeds are growing, like at Minneapolis Beach, probably you're not going to be real excited about that. So the question is, where would the public accept an herbicide? And then there's a gardening kind of issue. If you just remove all the milfoil, then other things take over. In the case of Roses Lake, it was the Curly Leaf Pond Weed, another invasive weed. So now they're looking at a herbicide to take care of that. So anyway, it's it's a little bit complicated in why it needs some careful consideration. So just the last item here, stormwater management. This is what I call the Woden Avenue Outfall on November 4th. And it was flowing as much as I've ever seen it. That was a rainy day, if you remember, before it snowed on that Sunday. This was a Friday. And it was really going. I usually take a bucket down there and time how long it takes to fill a certain amount of liters when I'm trying to just collect some background data on what the outflow is, working with Jake on this. But this was more, I mean, this would fill your bucket up faster than you could time it. So it was really going. And then there was this sheen on the water. And there was a smell that I had never smelled down there. And I spent quite a bit of time just looking at this because I've been interested in it. To me, it smelled like turpentine. And so I went to the fire station, talked to the guy on duty there. He brought, he and his buddy came down. I had to leave. I didn't join them there. And they concluded that this was just the fall flush, you know, stuff built up on the roads. At the same time, they said, oh, by the way, we feel we got a headache when we were down there breathing the fumes from this. So it was significant. Later, I talked to somebody who was in town that day. They had stuff on their shoes from the street. Crossing the street at Kelly's Hardware. Uh, crossing the street uh, at Kelly's Hardware, going over to Marcella's for lunch. And um, so I think something else happened. It's water under the bridge now, literally. Um, but I have talked to Jake about, you know, can we go back and look at the oil water separators? For example, and see if there's something in there that we could possibly look at and analyze. So anyway, we, what we think is that, well, there, first of all, there's no requirement that a city of this size, less than 10,000 people uh, get permit their stormwater system. So there's no legal driver. Um, but remember that our drinking water intake is about six football fields downstream, if you will, towards the dam from, from this outfall. Um, so what's the path forward? You know, we're working, as I mentioned, closely with uh, Public Works to address, to assess the situation. And then what we think is there must be some funding, even at the federal level from EPA to deal with this kind of thing. We did do a proposal to the Drinking Water Providers Partnership uh, for a kind of fifteen percent design for a filtration system at this outfall. It was not approved because they felt like it just didn't go far enough, you know? And by the way, they said you should go get some infrastructure money to do this kind of thing. So that's, that's probably what we need to do. Keep it blue. We'll prioritize putting big, good looking, you know, this drains to the lake kind of signs on the, on our drains. Um, clearly people need to remember. Initially I thought, well, you know, it's, it's Bob Getty up. You know, he's up there working on something and it got into the, I'm kidding, Bob. But uh, you know, but uh, you know, and somebody could do that incidentally, not really thinking uh, or even accidentally. You know, maybe your um, radiator leaks or something like that. So a number of things could happen uh, that wouldn't be nefarious or intentional. But something that this was a, a significant short term event. And it just highlighted for me the importance of this outfall. So I'm be happy to discuss that further. So here's the request. Uh, twenty-five year K per year for five years. That's an increase, but as I pointed out, um, you know, that's the, the past six years it was at this level. We do have inflation. Um, the city's leadership has been crucial. We want that to continue. And recent examples of new funding mean that the city's share has actually gone from forty percent. If you just look at what we do in bulk, adding the fifty-five K for wa- ongoing water sampling uh, in the middle of the lake with the, the PUD effort and figure in some of this twenty-five K, then you come up with, it's going, the, the relative proportion of the city's effort going down from forty percent to seventeen percent. We think that's a good thing and envision a future where we're continuing to uh, aggregate uh, higher and higher levels of funding. So grants from both grants and private donations. So um, this is the usual contact information. Happy to follow up. Glad to do more detail in a workshop if people want to do that. And uh, happy to discuss or answer any of your questions. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Any questions for Phil?
I have a question. Um, mentioned uh, using pesticides in the lake and obviously there's issues with that. Is that, you said five hundred and twenty acres or is tinsel? And we don't know how fast it returns when we mitigate that.
Yeah. And uh, one thing I didn't mention was that, well, it's part of our DASH experiment. We'll be looking at those areas. But one of the things they saw in Key Bay was you would see um, big anchors for a buoy. And around those anchors was the biggest concentration of milfoil. So it's pretty much points to an ongoing process. So my point is if we don't stop the bleeding in the sense of having some sort of boat inspection process where we can, you know, clean boats before of the milfoil that they're dragging along from the Columbia River or Roses Lake or wherever, um, then we're just going to continue to seed the thing. We saw, one of the things we found, I found really interesting. We had um, we, we would pull up plants, milfoil plants during DASH and meet in Key Bay especially. And they were a little stick about this long and that had these actually kind of beautiful purple and white roots about this long. And then the growth was about so high. And the guy said, oh, that's a week's worth of growth late in the summer. And so, well, really, so you could just almost see that little horizontal chunk landing on the bottom and it's probably been rooted there for a while. But initially, and that's how the stuff propagates and why it's so effective at going. So.
But just uh, you know, obviously we need to stop the contamination coming into the lake and support, you know, bushes or whatever's necessary. Also support, you know, like uh, Pertamin Gulch is feeding the nutrients in the lake. Something we could do there.
Yes.
And um, the last thing is, I know in order to get rid of algae, you could oxygenate water. You know, put aerators and things like that to really attack it and see how, how effective that would be. And then also like, you know, plants are sensitive to nu- nutrients in the soil. Can we, can we make it so they get a bad taste in their mouth? Something that we could do to mitigate the five hundred and twenty acres. Cause I think it's, you know, it's probably already past the tipping point and either we're going to have to mitigate it or we're going to have, I mean, these are things for, for you to do research with. Uh, I'd be really interested, I guess, to see next year how your DASH experiment worked and what it would take to do other than DASH, because that to me is too labor intensive. But I think this is a big deal.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll just talk about the, the possibility. So you've got DASH, like you say, very labor intensive, maybe good for selected areas. You've got something called ventic barriers, where you actually put down an impermeable barrier for a period of time, suffocate the plants. That's also pretty expensive, but maybe a little less expensive than DASH conceivably. And then you have the herbicide, right? It's going to kill the plant. And then you have um, lowering the lake level more than usual during cold weather. And this is almost a non-starter conversation with the PUD. But talking with the PUD folks, they're saying, yeah, we need to discuss this. But they have so many factors. There's seven or eight things that govern what they do with the lake level. So they don't have a lot of flexibility that way, but it's, it's by far and away the most powerful method. And it's important to note that if we did not lower the lake level fifteen feet every year, the way it's typically done, we would have a way worse problem. It would be like, like Enniet, for example, where the stuff is breaking the surface all the time in the midsummer. And so because of that, we're, we're eliminating the very shallow grow, growth of uh, milfoil and curly pond weed to some extent. And then as that has to grow up, so it stayed, it's relatively deep when the water's back up fifteen feet or so. So that's a method that we need to think about. And the question is, can you even get it right in terms of when the coldest weather is? Cause you, you know, if it's going to be exposed just for a short period of time, you would want really cold weather during that time to.
You mentioned lowering the lake. Can we use bulldozers and put that fabric down that's suffocates it during the, the cold months so that when the water level comes up, it's going to stay away from the, the beaches? So people aren't afraid to. I mean, we have an opportunity there.
Yeah, that's right. And I don't, I don't know about using bu- bulldozers, but I think you could have a mechanistic, a mechanized way of uh, putting more of this out in the areas that again, you were most concerned with. Cause you know, the geotextiles they use for this are still quite expensive, but all the same. Uh, I think it's probably demonstrably less expensive than, than the DASH process. So I can, I can imagine a process where you're actually doing all four of these things at different areas at different times to try to get a handle on it.
Mentioned some of the beaches where people want. Figure out how much acreage that is in the areas where people are going to be swimming and focus on trying to make sure that people aren't turned off to the lake. And that, that would just make sense to me is trying to figure out how do we mitigate the most important areas where people are actually getting in the water?
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point. And um, what I would like to see us do, well, we lack really good bathymetric data. So you know, you can't necessarily say exactly what's exposed at what level or what water level, but we're collecting some of that with our, our aerial drones. And so eventually we'll have that area, uh, you know, figured out. And then, so that, yes, that would be an excellent approach and figure out, okay, this is the area that's most important because, and, and it may be possible to come and actually physically remove. So when the beach cleanup we do in April, I want people to actually pick up bits of milfoil and pond weed that they find, uh, just like they're picking up trash. Um, because you might as well remove as much of that organic matter from the system as you can.
Phil, how, how deep are the divers experiencing um, milfoil and the, and the, and the pond weed?
You know, we, we, the best thing we have from that is the um, uh, dive we did with the drone at the Sorin's at Minneapolis Beach. So we had a fairly good linear patch there. We went across it. And um, I'm going to have to either go back and look at the video or maybe my memory will come back. But it was on the order of thirty feet, thirty-five feet. And actually we know this from another source, they looked at that when they did the survey. So yeah, the deepest um, invasive weeds typically, aquatic weeds typically about thirty or thirty-five feet. Beyond that, there's some things that happen, but there, it gets very sparse deeper than that.
So the maximum that they could lower the lake, if it was agreeable, would be down to about twenty-five, maybe thirty feet?
It's ten seventy-nine, I think, is the number. So yeah, they raised the lake level twenty-one feet in nineteen twenty-seven, right? So that, but, and getting to ten seventy-nine is a huge issue for a lot of people because you have boat docks, you have launches, all kinds of problems. But all the same, you're right, you could only, you, you only catch that fringe. But as Peter's pointing out, this might be well worth it to do that because you could get some flat areas that you wouldn't otherwise get if you weren't intentionally going just another couple of feet. So one of the bits of information we don't know is if you lowered it two more feet, how much additional area do you, are you able to use as to be controlling the pond weed and uh, and milfoil?
Last question. Um, back east, I'm familiar, a family member has a, a home on a lake where they have mechanical removal of tinsel milfoil as it grows. It's, they have like a combine or something like that that goes to.
This is on Lake Enniet?
Oh, no, this is back east.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, right.
Can we do that here?
Well, probably not because it's usually too deep. I mean, the, the, the pond weed usually breaks the surface can because it grows tall and skinny. And often people say, oh, I've got milfoil, but they really have pond weed. Um, and, but the milfoil usually is there, but a little bit deeper. It doesn't typically get as high and it varies year to year, how warm it was. Interestingly enough, we had a very late growth year because it was so cold in the spring last year. And we still have found plenty of this stuff at Minneapolis Beach especially to remove. So.
I watch a beauty harvester work for a lot of years at BB Point and it, it seems like they get it to come back and it's exactly like it was the year before.
Yep.
It's just cyclical, like cutting alfalfa.
And the other issue with that, of course, is you're breaking off chunks of it and those go reseed. And so it's, it's got that limitation, but it probably we're, really wouldn't work too well here uh, because of that depth issue.
Is there a certain type of alfalfa that has a really deep taproot? I remember you kind of talking about like Pertamin Gulch. You could plant these patches that would soak up the extra nitrogen.
Yeah, some sort of phyto remediation is a possibility. We, we don't actually, this is why I took this sample of, of uh, Pertamin Gulch, Pertamin Creek. Because I wanted to find out, is it a chemical fertilizer signal or something else going on there? And so that, that's, well, hopefully will lead into understanding nitrate cycling in the whole lake. But and, and the, the creeks that feed the lake. But I think you could do something like that, uh, phyto remediation. But part of it is in a really deep canyon. And of course, the concern always is that there's old bags of nitrogen fertilizer in there that are continually eating into the lake. I, I hope that's not the case, but it's a place nobody goes at that stretch between where it's farmland above and where it cuts down into the lake.
Well, thanks for everything you do.
Comments? Oh, you're doing a fantastic presentation as always. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Glad to do it. And again, I'm available. Call me, text me. Give you more info, more than you want probably, but it's there. So it's good.
Well, we have two final budget hearings for public hearings today. So I'll read the introduction, Shalan City Council Public Hearing two thousand twenty-three proposed final budget, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed two thousand twenty-three proposed final budget. If you wish to provide comment in this matter, please enter your name on the sign up sheet in the back of the room. When I call your name, please come over to the microphone, state your name and address and offer your testimony. The finance director will present the staff report and answer any questions from the council. I will then open the hearing for public comment. After the public comment, if any testimony will be complete, I will close the public hearing and no actual requests at this time. Mr. Thornton, would you make a presentation to the council?
Thank you. Uh, this, this is a public hearing on the budget. It'd be both our CIP and our uh, operating budget that we've been talking about over the last oh, month and a half or so. Uh, we've got the, these budgets are available online at the, on the city webpage. Uh, we've got some information in the back here if, if we have any members of the public who are interested. Uh, and at, I'll take any questions or comments.
From the council?
From the council.
Are no comments?
Well, I have a comment. I was going to save it till uh, council comments, but I could do it. It's relating to this topic. Would it be appropriate to do it now?
Go ahead and ask.
You'd like to have those comments now?
Oh, certainly.
Okay. Uh, as you know, I like to draft, so I have a thoughtful approach to these things. So bear with me. Um, at the Shalan City Council Workshop on November eighth, the council had a very spirited debate with Executive Director Mike Steele over the Chamber of Commerce request for seven hundred thousand dollars from the city through lodging tax revenue for the Chamber's twenty twenty-three budget. During the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two period, the city contributed over two point five million dollars to the Chamber's operations. During the same four years, however, the city invested just four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in twelve different nonprofit charitable public service agencies for the good of the entire community. The Chamber meanwhile, is a private, non-governmental, member oriented organization. On pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight of Shalan's draft twenty twenty-three Capital Improvement Program, CIP, Finance Director Steve Thornton quotes the Municipal Research Service Corporation, MSRC, quote, "All lodging tax revenues must be used for tourism promotion, acquisition of tourism related facilities or operation of tourist related facilities and appropriate RCWs were quoted." End quote. I encourage everyone to read and study those two pages. Shalan is often advertised as the number one tourist destination in the state. All of our city is a tourist facility. There's no delineation between tourist usage and residential usage. According to the twenty twenty OFM Census Report, Shalan had a population of about forty-eight hundred. And we know that an estimated head count mid-winter is about half of that, like right now. With the rest of going in Exodus to warmer clients in the Southwest. Recent reports are that upwards of fifty percent of our residences are second homes. And those people are not included in the census count. Therefore, our planning must be for about 10,000 people. And that does not include the influx of summer visitors is also does not include those who live along the North Shore or the South Shore beyond the city limits. Yet all of the infrastructure that we are responsible for must be built for maximum usage. Shalan's twenty twenty-three CI bud- budget is over twice what it was last year. Twenty-three million dollars in this package. Through regular reporting from our Public Works Department, we know that we have an aging and a failing infrastructure. The two downtown alley projects completed this year cost over one million dollars each. The two downtown alley projects completed this year cost over one million dollars each. The TIF program that we've been discussing for the improvement of East and North Shalane will run into the tens of millions. Cities contribution to both East and West Apple Blossom Center will likely cost likewise. And we're looking at major upgrades to both our water and sewer plants in a few years to the tune currently of fourteen million dollars in twenty twenty-two dollars. Our city is woefully behind in keeping up with the infrastructure demands, both for today and for tomorrow. When I asked Mr. Steel to forego four hundred thousand dollars from his request to the city. Which was his marketing budget. So that this amount could be put into public infrastructure to support our tourism, he responded, and I paraphrase here. Quote, it is not the chamber's responsibility to provide public infrastructure. It's the city's responsibility to do so. I couldn't agree more. Likewise, it is not the city's responsibility to financially support the chamber. That's the chamber's responsibility. With all of these considerations, I'm going to withdraw my request to withhold the four hundred thousand dollar marketing budget for the chamber that we discussed last time. Instead, I'm requesting that the city can council deny all seven hundred thousand dollars. Requested by the chamber and instead earmark those funds to go into our CIP program. To support tourist-related tourist-oriented facilities. Like the skate park, the Bude acquisition, the Lake Street Pocket Park, the downtown restrooms. And a myriad of other projects. Thank you.
That was a comment. Are there other comments? I'm not exactly sure how to follow up. I'm going to leave it to Mr. Thornton to follow up on Councilman Olson's comment.
On December sixth, we'll have a budget workshop and at that point. We would ask you to bring forward that that motion and the council could could vote on it.
Okay, is there something that I need to do to organize that or?
Well.
Just a simple statement?
A simple statement.
Okay.
Make a motion that that's that's the. That's the workshop where we digest all the information and come back with any amendments the council would like to make.
Okay.
Are there other comments for Mr. Thornton? Anybody on the Zoom?
Yeah, I would love to make a request that if John could send what he just read. To all of councils so that we can think about. What he's just proposed for comments at the December. Workshop. That would be helpful. And also to just clarify, the chamber is not a private entity. It's a five oh one C three nonprofit.
I'm sorry, but you have to be a member. You have to be a it's a membership oriented institution.
It's technically a five oh one C three nonprofit.
That may be, but it's still member oriented member subscription.
I have a question on that point is to. I know. Under the rules for the lodging tax. There is a requirement for cities over five thousand, but I believe. I believe the chamber is maybe designated as the advisory board. There's there is supposed to be.
We're not at five thousand yet.
I know, but I do they do they? Do they act in that capacity?
I think that's a will of the council to make up that board. Best memory.
I sit on the marketing committee. It's not technically an LTAC. But it is an advisory board at the chamber and I'm the city representative for that and there's representatives from hotel, restaurant. The chamber. And I can't remember off the top of my head what other organizations are in there, but or what other. Areas of business, but there is a advisor, a marketing advisory committee. That meets on the marketing direction for advertising funding for the year.
That's separate from the chamber.
It's part of the chamber. It's to guide the direction of the three percent lodging tax funds.
Back in the day, there was a separate board with Clint Campbell and Barb Watkins. Mr. Walker and that group and then that kind of got absorbed into the the chamber commerce. Grouping, that's for lack of a better term. Is that not about what happened, Aaron?
Yep, that's correct. When I first got on council, we had a board. That was just like, as you said, Clint and Barb, and then as they were stepping down, it was. Handed over to the chamber to guide the three percent spend.
Any other comments?
No comments for me, Mayor.
I'm going to open the public hearing and in the same breath, close it. And the council doesn't have any further comments. At that point, there is no action required. We'll move on to motion considerations. Of which the first one is professional services agreement for social media management services. Ms. Glucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our basic Facebook consultant. Agreement. I have Ms. Rom online to talk about some statistics. We have grown. Our followers last I looked, we had like seventeen hundred now. Our biggest one had to do with the owl rescue that was done by the Parks Department. Ms. Rom is not going to be increasing her price or anything. I find staff utilizes it quite a bit. And I have never heard a single complaint about her. She's very responsive, receptive. And very creative and much better at that than I am. Jenna, did you have anything you'd like to say?
Um, no, I that encapsulated it pretty well. We are actually up. To about eighteen hundred and fifty followers now, so maybe a little bit more even since Perry checked and. We increased our followers by about five hundred and thirty in the last year. So that is a pretty good number considering, as we just talked about population in Shland, sort of the pool that we're reaching into for followers. Also, just along the lines of the posts that have been performing the best for us. Like Perry said, definitely the owl rescue was by far and away the most popular thing that we have ever posted on this page. Reached about fifteen thousand people. Reach is a Facebook metric that just means like maybe their eyeballs got on it, but it also got so much engagement. It had like five hundred different people interacting. With the post in some capacity, they're sharing it, liking it, commenting on it. And also rounding out our top five, the number five highest was our owl update. So the owl was very popular. But our second highest post that we posted in the last year was when we made the traffic revision. At the intersection over on Johnson and I think Sanders. To make the two right turn lanes, that one reached about ten thousand people and had a ton of engagement as well. So. Sometimes the more mitty gritty details get get a lot of traction to just like the fun, the fun stuff. Other top posts, I actually posted a pretty picture on Saturday of the the kind of steam coming off the lake. That one had a ton of engagement. And all of our advertisements for the skate park meetings did really well as well. The only thing I'll note is that. Facebook slash Meta has been doing a lot of backend changes. Specifically to their business pages that have been. A little bit of a nightmare to navigate sometimes. So if you see a drop every now and then and what's going on, it might be that I'm I'm in another battle with Facebook's. Customer support folks, especially around the election, they tended to freeze a lot of things we were trying to post. Because they would flag them as election related just because we're a government entity, even though they want election related. So. Just a heads up, if you see those kinds of things happening, it could possibly be. Because of some some issues on the backend of Facebook.
Any comments or questions? Well, at this stage of the game, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the. Twenty twenty-three Social Media Management Services Agreement Extension with Shalane Social.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Hearing none passes.
Thanks, Jenna.
Inter. In Shalane. Lake Shalane Research Institute and the City of Shalane, Mr. Thornton.
Okay, building on. Mr. Long's presentation, this this agenda bill. Is a an agreement but for a five-year agreement for twenty-five thousand dollars a year with a. Lake Shalane Research Institute and also with the county. To do the continue the monitoring that that we were presented, the results of which we were presented this evening. And. Comments?
I'll move to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the interlocal agreement between the City of Shalane and the Lake Shalane Research Institute. Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven.
A second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Hearing none passes. RH two engineering task for authorization number nineteen, two thousand twenty-one amendment number one for downwind booster pump. Station supply line replacement predesign, Mr. Youngren from Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I think most of y'all are well aware. We've been working through some transient pressure issues in our downtown area. Last few years, we asked our consulting engineer and RH two to analyze that. It's since been incorporated into our capital improvement plan, so we appreciate council support and helping us address this issue. One of the first things we did was a pre-designed report that performed some hydraulic analysis to help us better understand. The issue at hand and during that process. That level of effort exceeded what we had anticipated originally. So this amendment. Shores up. That scope of work. To include the additional work that was completed. To approximately value of four thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. And we have adequate funds budgeted, we're relatively. Minor amount considering we're talking project. That'll exceed well over a million dollars likely. But. You have any questions, be happy to answer them. We felt like we did get good value out of this effort, too.
Right. Yep.
Questions? Once.
I move to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute task authorization number nineteen amendment number one with RH two engineering for the Darnells Booster Pump Station Supply Line Replacement Predesign Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Hearing none passes. May Apple Blossom Center Plan Development District Authorization to prepare a draft ordinance, Mr. Ajax.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So before you tonight is. A draft amendment to the Apple Blossom Center Development Agreement. And basically, what what the intent here tonight is to do is to introduce you to this. This amendment and for you to comment on it, there is a suggested motion. But I want you to know that there is no pressure for you to make a motion tonight on actually moving forward with preparation of an ordinance. And the also with that intent is to make sure that you are comfortable with what is in this agreement. And if you have questions, we can amend that. Make an amendment to that draft and bring it back to you for additional consideration before a motion is made to actually draft the final ordinance. So with that said, the best thing to do would be to look at page eighty-six. What I've done is gone through the original development agreement from two thousand three. And outline what the changes are in this new development agreement. Specifically to identify how the amendment would work with allowing multifamily housing. So what this does is implement the preliminary development plan that the hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on. And so if the council finds that the final development plan is in conformance with the hearing examiner's recommendation. Which the council has adopted, then we will move forward with an ordinance. So that's that's kind of the long-winded story. So with that, I can I can go over the the proposed changes. The amendments in the agreement, or if you have questions, feel free to to ask those. I did meet with some of the council members. I was hoping to meet with with all of you. To kind of get you up to speed, but.
It would be my hope that if more than one council member chooses to have that, they get together, so it takes less of your time to go through it.
Yeah, we we did that. I did. I did meet with two of the council members and we did go through it. There were some noted concerns there. But again, this is it. There needs to be some consensus from the council on on how this moves forward, so. I guess really I'm I'm open to questions.
I'm happy to jump in. It was if. For those of you that haven't met with John, highly recommend it because. There's so much in these documents. That he's been able to summarize, but I'll. I'll just raise the the main question that I had in this document was on. And I just have the printed out ones, John. I don't know what actual number page this is, but it's page six of the amendment to the development agreement. Under multifamily unit allocation intent of the developer. Where we have a table of phase one, phase two, phase three, and then across the top, we have market rate apartments, fifty-five plus. Housing for sale townhomes and affordable housing. And. My questions and concerns here were that it says. It has market rate apartments subject to phasing limitations, but nowhere in the document does it define what phasing limitations is. So being getting a definition or a clarification on what do they mean by that? Would be my number one question. And then number two, I have concerns around phase. Not knowing what phasing limitations mean, but phase one, I would like to see all of phase one completed. And have some sort of buffer period between building out two hundred and seventy-seven plus twenty-seven plus twenty-eight plus eighteen. That we have some kind of defined buffer between phase one and before they start phase two. So that we can understand what the impact is to the community and what. Other alterations need to be made or. If there are other mitigations that we may be seeing that had unintended consequences that we that weren't captured in this development agreement. So I guess my number two question would be making sure that we have some kind of. Buffer so that we're not just building, building, building without. We're not going too fast for our community to realize the size of what's being built out. We can. Take a planned approach and evaluate the impact that we're seeing from each phase. I hope that makes sense.
It does. Yeah, and and thank you for those comments. And just for the other council members, so the the table that Councilmember McArdle is referring to is on page forty-seven. And so there are three three phases identified. And it lists market rate apartments. Fifty-five plus senior housing, for sale townhomes. And affordable housing. And so there are three phases. And if you go across each column, what Councilmember McArdle is saying is that there. The way it's currently written, there is no requirement that. Phase one be completed in its entirety before phase two starts. So this, just for your information, so this information was relayed to both the applicant and the representative from Widener. And there is a proposal. I don't know if anyone from the applicant's team wants to. To talk about it. We weren't really looking to do that tonight, but. I guess if there are other council members that share that concern or have any additional concerns, I'd. Be willing to to hear those at this time.
I was present in that meeting and I too would encourage all the council members to meet with John. It was a very productive hour, hour and a half. We really appreciate it. The one variance, and I agreed with everything that Aaron said, except with one exception, and that is it seems to me a bit a bit unreasonable. To. Or efficiencies to expect the developer to start and then get mid-project reviews from the council. And possibly wanting changes. That just doesn't seem to be a reasonable approach. I have I've never done this kind of large of developments. I've done some small developments. But nothing of this scale and it seems to me like there. This whole thing is based upon efficiencies of scale. So I have a hard time thinking of. Interrupting their process or of bringing in other conditions. It seems to me like.
Can I just clarify, John? Let me clarify, John, what I meant in in pausing. So I know that they have a set of apartments. Can I just clarify, John? Let me clarify, John, what I meant in in pausing. So I know that they have a set of apartments that they had planned for the first phase. I'm not saying stop that midway, but if when that first proposed apartment complex is done, they just they don't just jump right onto the next apartment complex that's not currently in our plan right now. That's where that's where I was asking for some pause.
Well, when I had my sit down with Mr. Widener here, a year and a half ago, he brought up the experience in Leavenworth, and his experience, as I recall it, was that their project was three hundred apartments. And if there's a representative here that this information is incorrect, please let me know. But I remember him recall him saying the three hundred that they built, they they had them all rented or committed before they had occupancy permits. They were before they were completed. And they learned from that, and that's why we're seeing the scale of the project here. And that part is my opinion. That's why I think that we should be seeing the scale here. And and I just imagine from their perspective and the the rise of costs and everything, they've got that whole thing figured out. These are these are world-class players here that, you know, they know what they're doing. I just I just I just think it's just a little bit unreasonable to expect to do some sort of mid mid-analysis.
Like, I think I would agree with Aaron that it, you know, being able for the city to measure the impact of the first phase and have have a chance to react or adapt might be appropriate. I I agree with John that we can't change the rules per se. But, you know, for instance, if traffic impacts are greater in the downtown area or in certain areas, you know, having some period for the city to adapt and react to that before another three hundred units come online might be appropriate. And and I I'm not hard and fast on that. I don't know what the economic impact would be on the developer, but certainly it's something to to discuss and think about.
This is Peter. As you know, I've been very vocal on this. One of the things I'd like to talk about in this table is what I call front-loading. And the developer wants to build apartments. It's the biggest cash cow for him. It's the biggest attraction. We have a huge demand to live here, and so he wants to build apartments. And he's made it clear, the representative from Widener came in here and told us that he doesn't want to do anything for sale. He's interested in taking Widener to a hundred thousand units and 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 that's fine. But for me, what our community needs is more fee simple. And I've said this repeatedly, and apartments don't, you know, they said, well, we need workforce housing. I haven't seen one apartment by Widener that a workforce person could afford to buy or rent. You know, they're start at twelve hundred all over the place. I went on their site and I looked at it. Workforce housing is less than a thousand dollars, and even a thousand dollars would be very expensive for a person making minimum wage. The second thing is, in this table, you notice that in Phase Three, there's no market rate apartments. They're all pushed to the front of the list because that's what they want the most of, and that's what I call front-loading. Also, the percentage, seventy-five percent market rate apartment, I won't vote for this. It needs to be more like fifty-fifty. I've seen apartment complexes throughout southeast Portland be built, and twenty years down the road, they're all ghettos, crime-infested, drug-infested, because the the owners don't have any motivation to maintain the the facilities. And I've looked at the Widener apartments, and, you know, most of them are very new, and, you know, that's wonderful. But what happens when they start to get run down? We can't even get police officers to come up and ride jet skis, let alone deal with slums. And it changes the character of our community. You know, people, if they could live here or in Moses Lake, in Moses Lake, you could buy a home, you could develop equity, you could you could be a part of the community. And what we're saying is, oh, if you come to Shalane, you don't get to do any of that. And so we have a lot of seniors here that own their own homes that will not move out of them, that we could be applying those homes to the families if they could move into senior housing where they actually could buy them. And so I can tell you right now, you know what my vote's gonna be. And and I just, I think this is a train wreck for our community to allow this to move forward the way it is. And if Widener doesn't want to do it, I'm sure ABC, I can see on here how they responded to comments from the the council. And I really think ABC can can find somebody else that will be willing to come in and provide some fee simple condominiums. The the land values in this community are so high, there's there's people building all over the place, trying to keep up with the demand, and you know, I would encourage the council to reconsider this whole thing and push back a little bit, because I think what will happen is they'll come back with a proposal that'd be more amicable to our community. We don't have to take the first offer. We could push back a little bit. And so that's my comment. I I don't think this is a good fit for Shalane, and I'm gonna sleep well tonight because I'm saying no. So.
Anybody else have a comment? We don't have to vote on anything on this night, but until we get to that level, say you express your own opinion.
Hi, can I say something? Hey, sorry, I'm Andy from ABC, and here.
Glad Andy we can hear you.
Okay, I I want to say that I I I'm surprised that this is until now, this this proposal is it's so widely misunderstood. Mr. Widener only owns ten acres out of the entire project. As much as he wants to today, he can only build two hundred and eighty-four units of apartments. He doesn't have any more land in ABC to do that many things. And I think that we have continued to try to communicate to to everyone that our objective is not to build big box apartments. We're trying to introduce senior housing retirement to to try to turn this into kind of a retirement-oriented communities. And we will bring in the for-sale units. We will try to accommodate affordable housing. And we have also also, and maybe Mark from our team can help us kind of read out what we have put together for for the council tonight. We actually have a plan. It is not our our intention to have large apartments, one after another. In fact, I kind of see that that's the concern. And I knew that from the very beginning, when I walked into the the city planning department, that was the very first thing that was broken to me, that the city is not looking to have you know, multiple big apartment buildings at that location. That's not the best because it will impact the traffic, it will impact a lot of different things. And I am totally in agreement to taking a more phased approach, especially with large apartments. I do think, though, that putting too many restrictions on any other type of housing will have unintended results. Because I think at the end of the day, we want we want those other type of housing to be introduced into the ABC. And and Mark, do you, would you mind reading what we've written out?
No, I can I can elaborate on that a little bit. My name's Mark Mark Neal, MJ Neal Associates, architect for the project, or at least for Andy's portion of the project. We we've been listening along the way here and in between, you know, meetings with the council to try to figure out what would be most palatable to the city and and not be any more intrusive than we have to be. Because anytime you develop all properties, it changes things, and and it's going to continue to change things because you can't build something without change. The city needs a variety of different housing types. Part of that is the fee simple, which are not condominiums. Condominiums are not fee simple. Condominiums are a different form of ownership that comes come with its own set of of concerns. But we do need rental properties as well as fee simple. And in this particular case, we're proposing multifamily. The the modification to the plan development specifically excludes single family. And that was, you know, part part of the revision to the development agreement was that this was going to be higher density multifamily, so that in fact, we were more compatible with the adjoining commercial and industrial uses of the of the area. It's to take away all the commercial and put a bunch of single-family homes out there isn't necessarily that compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So without, we started, I sort of backed up and started to summarize what we kind of the steps that we've gone through, because this has been going on, this discussion's a year long, in in it'd be a little longer than that. We know that the hearing examiner has recommended an approval for seven hundred and twenty units over a thirty-acre portion of this site, and the site is something north of fifty acres of developable land left to be. We know that the when we were looking at it, or most recently looking at it, knowing some of the comments that were coming back, we were trying to address, you know, how to how to kind of meet those concerns. One of them is the the need for some affordable housing. Well, as part of the plan development modification and the development agreement, five percent as a minimum would be set aside, five percent of the total units built would be set aside for affordable housing. And those are, that's an affordable housing definition that the state produces. And basically, that was given up as one of the conditions of of approval, even for the hearing examiner. We tried to look at the phasing from the standpoint of how to how to get the economy a scale, meet a large housing need, and at the same time, phase that out. So our first attempt, and the the chart that's in your your packet, this was just that, a first attempt. We we tried to to do that. And in discussions with with Andy and his group, you know, the the need to spread that out a little bit more became apparent, and and they're willing to, you know, consider doing that. There are a couple of things that that come along with that. The first one is that when these were numbers were proposed for phases, that they were proposed as maximums per phase. And somewhere along the way, there's been some discussion about making these minimums as opposed to maximums. And so completing all of Phase One sort of sets it as a minimum standard as opposed to a maximum standard. And the difference being that yeah, we we propose Phase One to have roughly two two hundred and eighty-four multifamily units, and and that was done intentionally to address the Widener project and their ten acres, and they've been working hand in hand on this thing for longer than I have. And the idea that out of that, five percent of those would be affordable, okay? And that gives them the economy a scale that they're looking for. It also allows us to produce a large amount of housing in one block for the needs for the community, that obviously everybody is aware of the needs. Cost of those units is just based on what it costs to produce that that product today. And it costs the same in Moses Lake as it does in Shalane to produce that product. I know because I'm doing projects in Moses Lake, Shalane, Marysville, Snohomish, variety of places. It it doesn't, it it's going to cost the people moving to Moses Lake the same amount as it does to to Shalane. Now granted, right now, you can't find a place to live in Shalane, so it's more expensive. But once we put some product on the market, that that's going to have to temper that just a little bit as well. There's also a variety of different unit sizes and things that come with that, because not everybody wants a two-bedroom, you know, two-bath apartment.
Can I comment really quick before you get too far ahead? Okay, using the term fee simple, you're referring to single-family and condos are different. The grand view is a mixture of all kinds of units, apartments, short-term rentals, condominiums, and things like that. And so your pink column here, for-sale units, is is kind of what I was referring to as fee simple. You know, to me, we need a we need a variety of units, including apartments, and I'm okay with apartments. But if we're gonna build seven hundred and twenty apartments, I would like to see three hundred and sixty-four sale condominium or attainable housing or whatever, half of them for sale, because that's what we really need, too. We don't, you know, having all apartments deprives the people of being able to purchase a home. And and, you know, develop equity and stuff like that, because there's no other homes that they could afford to buy in the area. And and it's hard to attract people to come work in our hotels or at our schools when they can't buy a home and develop equity. And that's what I'm trying to stress. That's my biggest point, is I want to see that pink column balance out against, you know, maybe the senior over fifty-five, half for sale, half, you know, apartments. But what I'd really like to see is, at the end of the day, three sixty and three sixty, rather than five fifty-two apartments and however many of the other types of units. You know, to me, that's what we need in our community, and that's what I'm kind of gonna dig my heels in on. And and I've seen ABC do amazing things, and they've come and responded to so many things, the senior over fifty-five housing, the mixed use, everything. But but we need we need for-sale units in our community to help people be able to move here and work in our community.
Appreciate that. And and somewhere, it needs to be built. It just isn't necessarily what this group of people are pushing to build. And and I I recognize that well, there's 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 two or three different things that that come out of that. One one is that not everybody is ready to buy. So they still need an apartment to live in. So my kids, and they're all grown now, thirty to thirty-five, all of them lived in an apartment or a rental of some sort until they could afford to buy it. And they did. And and eventually, they go through that progression. And and I think that happens in every community, that there's a certain number of people that are not ready to buy for whatever reason, down payments, interest rates. We also have another factor that's starting to show its ugly head here, and that is that the market conditions change. And so what we decide to build today may not be marketable tomorrow. With interest rates, the housing builders or the single-family home builders are having to start thinking about pulling back a little bit. So in this particular case, this particular development wasn't developed for essentially single-family or this proposal. But that doesn't mean that there couldn't be some purchasing, e- even some condominium condominium condominiumization of some of these these units, just not in the first apartment project. And I think that when we look at the townhomes, the for-sale units, I I think that's an opportunity to to have people that are downsizing from their five thousand feet on the lake to, you know, twenty-two hundred square feet that they can manage. But basically, to dictate what those are at this stage kind of ties the hands of the developer in terms of responding to the market and what the market's demand is going to be. I tend to, I I understand where Aaron was coming from with needing to define what the phasing requirements are. I think that we we do need to put more definition around that. But I do think that our the proposal that Andy's asked me to to read, and I'm kind of paraphrasing and jumping around a little bit, is that we we base the phasing on the multifamily, the large multifamily projects, and we spread that out over a period of time. We start with Phase One with multifamily at the two eighty. We start with phase one with multifamily at, at the two eighty-four level and then spread out phase two and three multifamily. You know, with a hundred and seventy-five, the second phase and a hundred, the third phase or some magic number in, in between, allow some smaller developments to occur a little more organically in between so that we're not dictating that all those apartments or all of those units are going to be built in one style at one time. The advantage to that, of course, is it lets the small local developer come in and we're, we're throwing out a number of, of less than fifty units because smaller local developers can do, can manage a forty-eight unit project. They may even phase that over three years. Um, project we did at Eniad, uh thirty-six units phased over three years. But it was this small, a couple of guys got together and pooled some money and, and developed it. Um, so it lets it be done a little more organically than necessarily um all one big project. So there's some phasing things that can be done to spread that out. But we want to phase that based on the large projects, not on the small organic stuff that, that can be and to fill in between, because we don't have all one big parcel. We've got a number of, of lots that need to be developed. And they're spread out over fifty acres. And I don't necessarily think that we want to put, you know, all seven hundred and twenty units in one spot. Cause that's not necessarily what the community asking for. We are asking for different styles or different types and different uses, including that fifty-five and older. What that looks like is yet to be determined because we haven't got approval to do it. So we haven't planned it yet.
Um, Can I make a comment about your forty-eight unit apartments? Um, if it was forty-eight units, I'm good with apartments. Seven hundred and twenty, that's going to increase the population of, of Shalane by fifty percent. I have an issue with. We really need to make sure that it does not change the character of our community. And, and I'm, I'm gonna dig my heels in and kick and scream all the way down the end. I'm probably gonna lose, but I think we could find our way through this and really help make this a better fit for our community.
I, and I think so too. And I, I I, my nature is to want to challenge and, and debate the issue tonight, but that's not really why I'm here. The, the goal is to let you know that we're looking at ways to phase this, to uh break it down into increments that especially from Apple Blossom Center standpoint, uh, that we can do a variety of different things and not necessarily be held to, you gotta build this many this time before we can do the next project. Because it, it just doesn't work with the, the economy and the, and the market conditions. The, the uh, uh Widener project, little different situation because they've got the, the acreage to, to do the two hundred and eighty-four. And that's the product that they generate and they do a good job of it. They maintain them well and most of the projects you've looked at that are relatively new are probably a lot older than you think they are. Because they do a good job of maintaining it. I've always liked working with owners that know how to maintain their product. And, and they do. Um, even though I'm not the architect for their projects, they, they still, I've looked at a number of them. Um, and, and they just do a good quality job of maintaining what they build. And that's because they own it. They don't build it and develop it, spin it off, sell it to somebody else to have to, to worry about. So they take care of it, they better. Um, my daughter leased from them in Seattle or Shoreline. Uh, I've got employees right now that are, you know, in their units in Winancie. Uh, I just have a, a good understanding of what their, their general attitude is towards their, their product and, and their facilities. Um, but we did want to, you know, throw out there that for, for subsequent projects, being able to, to not be limited as much by, you know, because of scaling them down. Because for instance, if we did a forty-eight unit project and a local developer comes in to do it, there's a good chance he's not going to build all forty-eight at one time. He's going to build it and get it approved, but he may build it over a two-year period. The phasing, uh, if we stagger the, the large projects out that are over fifty units, the, then we could stagger them, give a buffer period, um, give a chance to do a little bit of review. The reality is that each project gets to go through CIPA again. So there's al- already a, a built-in review mechanism that has to happen that if we're uh hitting some threshold for, for traffic or uh, you know, utilities or infrastructure, that that CIPA review is there to, to cover some of that. Not necessarily saying, okay, we're going to go ahead, go through a whole new hearing process. It's the, the mechanisms are there to basically improve that over a period. And
Mark, Mark, can you share with the council about how we technically would be able to deal with the largest apartments that are in the sort of developmental type of the region? We have to, we've come and put an idea together to share.
Are, are you guys able to understand what he's saying? Okay, need to say that again, Andy.
Sorry, sorry, I, I've got a noisy background, but we, we have, I think you and I have put together a narrative about how to, how to stage the large scale apartment projects if they are going to be, and we don't anticipate that there is another one yet. And I just want to make sure that, that you can explain our, our approach.
Yeah, ba- basically what, what I could do is, is kind of read through the um the outline that I've, I've got in front of me. I have provided a copy of it to John, but it was too late to get into today's packet. So obviously it'll need to, to be distributed. The uh phasing. Where did I leave off? So that our latest proposal, which modifies the, the table that's in here would be that uh essentially we would create the phasing on, based on the large scale projects, more than fifty units. And spread those out with, with two-year intervals. And if we need more time for digesting those in between, that's, that can work. But we still want to have the flexibility, if we decide to do a uh smaller project, to not have to wait until phase two to be able to do those smaller projects. Um, and just to quickly read through here, phase one would include the development of lots six, seven and eight, which is the Widener piece, two hundred and eighty-four multifamily units. And that's out of the originally proposed three hundred and fifty for phase one. But uh and those would be the, the market rate, um, you know, development. The um, at the end of that or at some predetermined percentage of occupancy, we'd start to review at that point. The uh, and give the city's staff at least an opportunity to review to see if there's some uh encumbrances or some uh additional barriers that come along with uh that in terms of impacts to the traffic or whatever. And the development agreement actually addresses some long-term traffic impacts anyway. So there's going to have to be some, some dis- debate about that. Uh, as we get closer to hitting threshold levels, uh and it need to be some additional traffic. Um, but we want that phase one to be based on the alter, the market rate multifamily units, the large-scale project. It lets us to do the other types of projects, the, the uh townhomes, the uh fifty-five plus, the senior housing, that sort of thing, without necessarily interfering with the progress of the phasing. Phase two, then any large-scale projects and we set a threshold of a hundred and seventy-five instead of the two seventy-five um, would have to be, have that follow-up uh review. Doing that, if there are some additional impacts or thresholds that need to be addressed, um, most of them are going to show up in CIPA anyway. So at that point, if we hit a traffic threshold that needs improvements, or we need more utility upgrade. This could be a then phase three would be another hundred mu- market rate apartments. Um, are just is development, if there's any land left to, to develop those on, because uh over that, if each of those are staggered in about a two-year window, you know, we're looking at six or eight years out before we're actually developing those additional market rate multifamily and we may wanting to restrict only do residential. Still been a lot of discussion about the commercial aspects of the site and this development. They're all covered under the development agreement, most of which were prior to. So with that, you know, phase three uh would, would be, would allow a hundred unit project if there's land in time, uh, the smaller projects, less than fifty, alternative housing styles, you know, would be seniors are more affordable or on homes. That would give us, you know, kind of a, an incremental growth rather than a, you know, build seven hundred and twenty units next year. I don't think the anyway, but you know, that um, I think over a that's all market driven. Well, I, I expected that it would. So I'm happy to answer any questions or any uh cover, cover any intent that we might have.
Couple of comments, questions. Um, I think there's a lot of room for tinkering with the phasing to kind of help ameliorate some of the concerns. And I look forward to seeing the details of what you have posing. Um, I, I do think uh, you know, we have a, a, an urgent need for affordable housing existing. Um, and every market rate unit that's built will only increase that need for affordable housing because it'll increase the need of lower wage workers. And so I, I would like to make sure that there's provision in there to, to front load as much as possible or, or, or certainly balance with um with the development, the, the affordable housing component. I don't, I don't know that in the, in the development agreement, it's not strictly tied. If you, if you build a hundred units, then you're going to have five units of affordable housing.
It, it actually is. It's part of, part of the uh agreement that the hearing examiner is recommending approval, five percent of any of the units built would be.
So I, I think that, that's important. Um,
And, and I think that another point that I'd like to, like to make is that part of the demand for market rate house to land right isn't necessarily new people moving in, it's housing the people that are already here that are stacked on top of each other. Are we really increasing the need for services? To some degree, you're bound to, but in a, in a lot of ways, what we're seeing is people that can't afford or can't find a place to live here that are needing to I have an apartment of their own instead of camping out with
Or, or commuting long distance
Thirty miles, yeah.
Get here. Yeah. And I, and I understand that. Um, the other question I had was uh, I, I didn't see any kind of definition for the senior housing, for fifty-five and older housing. And, and I don't know if that's just kind of an, a, a, a kind of an accepted thing, or should that be more, more clearly outlined?
Yeah, there's a couple of different definitions available to us to look at. The part of it, part of it is, is what do we want to create? Uh, I've actually done senior housing fifty-five and older under the RCWs. W's, they have certain restrictions and requirements in order to do that. If you build an apartment building, twelve units, you're not allowed to limit it to fifty-five and older unless you meet the criteria of the, the uh not allowed to exclude kids unless you meet those uh there's a whole Fair Housing Act thing that that kind of trumps most of what I'm talking about because it's at the state level. And in some cases, federal level. So we do have some definitions that we've been kind of kicking around. And the, the state actually has about four definitions for senior or fifty-five and old. A and some of them come with additional criteria. What we don't necessarily want to do is create a bunch of um, old folks homes, uh amenities to go with that. And so there is some of, of that that needs to I would like to think that we're, we could build some of each limit it to just category. Cause it'd be nice to have a, some fifty-five and older type housing that somebody that's fifty-eight could move into without necessarily needing services. But then there's the, the whole other comp assisted living. They come along. Oh, interesting point that original development agreement that exists today not approved. Change here, assisted living, nursing facilities, that sort of thing is all allowed under the previous development agreement. Really not talking about assisted living as part of this amendment as much as we are a- addressing a broader range of, of age brackets and trying to meet those different needs. Uh, this, we get into a point where senior housing and affordable housing crossover. Get into a, a bracket where senior housing and market rate housing can cross over. So we do have a variety of, you know, kind of things that are intertwined there. I don't think we want community unthink it.
I don't know if it's just the zoom, but Mark's audio is cutting in and out.
It, it is because he's not talking into the microphone. I was waiting for a break to ask you to do that, but I was waiting for you to stop talking.
So should we maybe take this offline?
I, I touched the crowd and as I move, as I'm, you know, my audience isn't moving, but I am.
Harold has his hand raised. Harold.
Just, I wanted to follow up on that and say it, it might be useful to just clarify the, the, you know, what we're talking about with respect to senior housing and, and you know, obviously there sounds like there's a statutory uh definition or requirements, but, but that not, may not be a hundred percent of what you want to do as a developer. So I, I just think, you know, it, it, then the other point of clarification was just, I, I see one of the permitted uses is, is transient rentals. And uh, obviously we want to make sure that at no point in the future, these become vacation rentals. And we want to certainly understand that implication.
Yeah. See, the original development agreement, as it's correct written, allows lodging hotels. Okay. And, and so that stays in, in place. But the, the residential component that we're talking about here is not short-term rentals. This is all, uh, I, I'm not sure that market rate defines everything, but basically these are, these are not short-term rentals.
I know, but, but to what extent can we differentiate if, if an owner of a, of a block of apartments decided to turn them into transient lodging?
I can maybe respond to that. So one of the new definitions that we added was multifamily. I can maybe respond to that. So one of the new definitions that we added was multifamily specifically for this amendment. And in that definition, it says a building containing three or more dwelling units and designed to be occupied by more than three families living independently of each other and not rented for more than thirty, thirty days.
Once it's permitted under that definition, then they would have to be re-permitted to
change over. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and the difference is the, the R two occupancy group versus an R one. And because R one is your short-term rental. Um, but yeah, we, we, I thought we had it covered. I didn't remember exactly where. So the uh, but the intent early on was to establish that these rentals were, were housing, not short-term rentals for, for tourists. Cause we already have the provision if we want to do a hotel. And that there may be one before we're done, but it's really not part of the, the residential component here that we're talking about. Um, and that's, that's important because of the whole debate over short-term rentals and we knew that early on.
Thanks.
I have one more comment. Um, you mentioned about demand for apartments that if you built seven twenty right now, you wouldn't be able to rent them out. I could bet you, if you built a hundred condos in this community, every single year, add in fit infinitum, you could sell them all because the demand to live in this community is so high. And so I believe that there's tons of people that want second homes and they don't want to mow the lawns. And, and so I, I'm telling you that anyways.
Yeah, no, I, I, I know what you mean. And, and I think that uh, I think that I've been around Shalan long enough. Now I'm only recently a resident, but I've been around Shalan since I was old enough to wade in the water. Um, Shalan goes through its cycles with real estate and sales and it has its ups and downs and some years, you know, the last few years, you could, could have sold anything to anybody at way more than you've thought you could have ever sold it. There's been years when people have had to cut the price on the real estate in order to, to move it. So we've seen a, a wide range of, of market conditions and for, as a developer or representing the developer, we, we, we need to be able to respond to what those market conditions are. Because you can't go out and build seven hundred and twenty units. And we aren't asking to build them all at one time anyway, but you know, you can't build them and expect it to uh, be all sold out. Although there is, there is a pent-up demand. I, I have no doubt that two hundred and eighty-four units would be occupied pretty close by the time they're finished.
Well, I think we can be your own. I
Sure.
And I, I think what we need to do is, is we kind of got to where we need to be. And now I think it's time for, for you and, and your group to work with John and the council to come on board with what that talks are going to be, and then we'll come back and revisit this.
Well, and, and I is the best route for us to, to work with John and put a final proposal together for council to respond to.
I think that's the best bet.
Okay.
So there
I'd like to make a quick comment. Uh, when we do agree to pass this amendment to the development agreement, there's definitely an aspect of trying to dictate to the developer um, minimums and maximums and, and what types of housing and all these things. And we're kind of a little bit, we're not past that point, but uh, we're, we're in a capitalist democracy and they have a right to build as the market demands and as the market adjusts. And I have a hard time with minimums and maximums and saying, if the market's really great to build, no, you can't do that because they, they own the property and we're, we're to this point. I think the hearing examiner obviously tied our hands on a lot of it. And so now we need to work together to hopefully keep it within the spirit of Shalan and the vibe of Shalan. And so it's not completely changing things, but uh, there's an aspect of dictating to developers what you can and cannot do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. But we're going to end this one and go into administrative reports. And we have a rate fee resolution draft update. And it says, Mr. Thornton, but the only ones who can make any changes is Mr. Ajax. So Mr. Ajax has the floor.
Looks it. Oh, okay. Yeah. So we have Louis Gonzalez out of our building department. He's our building official, who is actually the one that is um, made some recommended changes to our rate resolution. Louis, if you'd like to go ahead and explain those, go ahead. All right, I can do it.
Yeah, tha- thanks, John. Um, so what, what we did, we actually went through the rate resolution and um, did a few updates to clarify um, some of the fees that we have in place. Um, we didn't add any extra fees or new fees to it. We just want to, to add some language on there to clarify, um, you know, what the purpose of those fees were. And um, but that, that's basically it. We did. Yep.
I think I would add one thing just to, to point it out to the council. There, there is a fee in here for the sidewalk cafe that would be an annual license. It would be a hundred and fifty dollars. So that is for use of the public space.
It's almost a permit based and not a use based. I think we ought to look at a use based.
That's one way other cities do that. They do on a per square foot amateurized rate.
We can look at that. Any other comments? Wait, there's no other comments. We'll move on to mayor council comments and we're going to start with Aaron.
Oh gosh, um, I will pass. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, are you out there?
I am mayor. Um, I'm good for right now. I'm over um, on the west side for Thanksgiving with my family. I'll be back very soon.
Thank you. Well, let's go on down to Tim then.
Just, uh, I want to recognize John for all the work he's put into uh, helping explain the uh, Apple Blossom Development Agreement and field questions and his grasp and understanding makes me feel very comfortable having somebody that's professional in that capacity negotiating with developer for this. Well, thanks for that, John. Um, uh, on that, uh, I guess happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I think, you know, despite all of our controversies and all the growth and you know, issues we're facing, we got a lot to be thankful for. Thanks.
Peter.
We kind of stole my thunder. I was going to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and um, as you can see, everyone on this council has a passion, a love of the, this community. And uh, sometimes I go round and round and, and uh, I, I just care about this place. It's priceless. And uh, so if I go around in circles, uh, just forgive me for that and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
It's saving me to have to do it.
John, or Chris?
I just want to thank all the veterans. I missed the parade for the first time in several years, but thanks to all the veterans and happy Thanksgiving.
Being retired, you have lots of time to um, follow up on things that you've been thinking about for a long time. And I Googled the other day, the Bill of Rights. And I was looking at article number two, I believe it is. It's uh, basically the right of assembly. There's all a lot of things listed on there. Which is to something you really be thankful for, because a lot of the world doesn't have this. In fact, the majority of the world doesn't have this. We can go where we want to go, live where we want to live. And if this place wasn't so damn nice here, we wouldn't have a lot of these problems. So um, other than that, I've talked too much tonight. So thank you.
Barry, do we have Sherry out there?
No.
Okay, I won't thought. Okay, here's a couple of my quick comments. We've been kind of busy running around here. We met with the sheriffs, you, Brian was up and, and we revisited the old city hall. Uh, the properties they want to, to use, the, the fact that jail is, is probably a death trap and a, a storage area. So we're going to try to get with them and, and make the final agreements and work that out. The uh, State Park Commission was here for three days last week. Mark Brown thanked me for coming down and, and doing that. They are very, very professional looking outfit. Uh, Wade and I met with the Campbell executives, uh, they have their wishes, uh, the Marina versus the the Emily Park, and a lot of other issue we could read on. Uh, the biggest one right now is about six months ago, the Shland County Commissioners were on a, a meeting with us and they said, we are trying to dispose of surplus property within our county and within our cities. So he said, we have two parcels in Shalam. Uh, one, whatever reasons, about ten feet wide and about a hundred feet long on Washington Street by the Wood City Shops. The other one is a five point seven eight uh, X on Boyd Road. And the assumption was they just want to clear the books as if you read the paper, there are six of these pieces that are going to be just given over to the city. Well, our conversations last Tuesday, when we talked to them, they seemed to forget which properties we're talking about. And they seem to believe that the estimate for the one on Boyd Road for the five point plus acres was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So now it stands, do we want to consider that? Or do we just want to turn our backs and are going to put it up for auction in early December? I have a meeting with Tiffany tomorrow. Uh, if the council wishes that maybe we should need to progress this and look at it because of the short-term uh, discussion we've had with the commission and we need to look into further. So I kind of need a consensus. Do we not do anything? Or do we say, hey, wait a minute, let's review this. Is that kind of the summary you had, Wade?
Pretty much in that what mayor's asking councils is to ask commissioners to give us some time before they put it in an auction block in uh, December or January, I think. Um, it is December, yeah, December. Um, to ask them to take that piece, the father of the piece off while we study that and see if it's something the city would like to consider. All we're doing is just buying time to see if, hey, is this worth it? Mayor and I went up there and looked at it. It's
It's a difficult piece, but if you have an imagination, it is on the road, it is sort of water, sewer and power. Uh, it would be a stretch of imagination, but somewhere along the line, this city's got to buy some properties so we can negotiate with other entities in conjunction with that to build some of these houses we keep talking about. If it don't own dirt, it's kind of hard to negotiate with something.
That's a, ultimately council decision, but we'd like to, the mayor and I would like to at least present you guys with a uh, viable option either to buy it or not, based on what we researched. So yeah, Peter.
Well, I'd be wanting to make a motion that we study it.
I don't think
We don't need a motion, just consensus, just not ahead yet.
I think that is possible for anything.
Yes.
Aaron is contacting me and she wants to know what property um, exactly you're speaking of. So could she give you a call tomorrow to get more specifics or?
I would support it with, if the rest of council is supporting it, then I'm totally fine with it.
Okay.
Aaron, I'll be, I'm, I'm off tomorrow, but uh, if you want to come in Monday, I'll, I'll, we'll pull up the G S map. I'll show you exactly where it is.
That big gravel pit, right?
It is, it is a gravel pit halfway up. It's five, five plus acres. Uh, how you look at that, if there's terrorists, whatever, if it's nothing more than to secure that for a, a couple of years. And so what we need to do, I think that the, the option of owning dirt is premium now. We're talking about all this housing and everything, but it, it's just like the housing trust. If you can get some dirt, you might as well grab it. So if the consensus is just ask Tiffany, say, hey, would you ask the rest of your commission to stand down and don't put that on the first list for the auction?
I think that's what we prefer for council, yes.
Yes, okay. So the other thing that seems to have drawn a little bit of attention is a traffic count that Brian Patterson did for us. And the story kind of goes, Brian Patterson worked with the Department of Transportation to do the Highway one fifty study. Well, he was in here one day and I have had conversations with San Diego County Traffic Council as well as DOT. They were impressed with his work. So when he was in here a couple of weeks ago, I said, Brian, we have our own little study going. We've had DOT and Shland, Douglas County Traffic Council with their counters out and they've, they've compiled enough information that we can look at it. Would you be interested in perhaps working with our engineer Travis? Because of, you might have a little bit more indication what you've done than Travis has. And I would like if you would don't mind putting him in. But well, he kind of took the bull by the horns and he did a study. And he did it reasonably well, but by no means is that relation official to anything with the city of Shalam. So as, as Travis gets caught up in some of his projects and can make up some of those numbers relevant to the, the pointed perspective on a couple of downtown issues and Highway one fifty ninety-seven A. Then we'll come back with our version of this same thing. So read it for what it's worth. Uh, it's pretty interesting, but it's not official. And I thank Mr. Patterson and all that work. And that's where we're going to end that one until we get our own engineer to analyze the, the stuff that Shland, Douglas County Traffic Council, DOT. And our own uh, crews had cameras out there over a period of time doing some of the things. That not true, Jake?
Yeah, I we, we had just kind of started wrapping our minds around some of the data. We had shared that data with Brian at his request and he had taken initiative to perform his own analysis, which we haven't thoroughly reviewed or anything at this point yet, but we have shared it with our consulting engineers to have them maybe look over it. Um, what comes up? We, we have, uh, this year we did the city in conjunction with other agencies took a fairly aggressive swing at getting some updated numbers um, at multiple points throughout the summer. So we haven't totally formulated like what we want to present that in what format we want to assemble and present that in. We, at this point, we're kind of thinking to utilize it to um, come up with peaking factors for our, to account for our summer season. That was kind of the point of uh, getting summer data is to, to figure out what, what kind of peaking factors do we see in the summer? And then how can we incorporate those into our development standards? So when we uh, when development comes in and, and is required to do a traffic impact analysis, we have um, more confidence in our ability to review or apply a peaking factor to some baseline data.
Rather than do
Yeah.
Rather than doing the whole project, we need to split it down into a couple of specific areas rather than waiting to compile the whole thing and, and that will give us a better shot at doing that.
Right, right. And we, we haven't, that, we don't have a good, hard and fast plan on how how we're going to handle the data yet, but it's, it's been helpful for us to some degree, certainly. And what the work Brian's done seemed to be very professional, well thought out and um, we're still looking at it, but though you'll likely hear more from us in the next this winter, likely.
If you look at that, you think this guy must be professional because he's sure drawn out with a lot of details or that's truly factual to what you have and what he had. Anyway, let's dump that.
Yeah, it seemed like he did a really nice job.
Information out there. So I'm going to shut down. And I am going to turn it over to Wade for his updates.
Okay, uh, anything else?
I don't really have, well, I wasn't going to share anything, but as this Boyd Road property came up, I, I think it would be prudent for the city to consider um, potential uh, stormwater infrastructure. Um, it's, it's at the low end of developments that don't have stormwater infrastructure and a place to, to, so potentially detain. There are easements that could get to that property, I believe. But like I said, I'm I mean, all, all, I guess I'm, I was, I'm glad council decided that maybe um, look at this because I think there's other opportunities that we we could utilize to, to at least consider.
That's, okay. Paul? Anything else?
Nothing, nothing for me.
Steve? Uh, Jackie, you're out there. Do you have anything for council?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Gary. Right. I don't really have a lot either, other than uh, uh, happy Thanksgiving. And as we celebrate Thanksgiving, remember the things that perhaps didn't happen in your life that you should be thankful for. The school you didn't get into, the uh, the one that got away. The job you didn't get or didn't pan out, but it also led to maybe more and better things. I did my own case. I can, I could go down a very long list. So I, I read that this morning. I thought that's pretty appropriate. Anyway, so happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have. Oh, one more thing. Tim, you're on ta- on tap for tomorrow for the radio.
Okay.
Uh, recess in the city council meeting, open airport board meeting and acceptance of motions here, one on the minutes.
Almost into accept the minutes.
We could be here long.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I
opposed, hearing none. Uh, consent agenda?
I have reviewed the accounts payable for the airport and found them to be in order, so I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I
opposed, hearing none. So we have a, a public Opposed, hearing none. So we have a, a public hearing on the proposed budget for the. Lake Shland Airport and I'm going to skip all this to cut her me already. So Steve presents your staff report and we have no people want to make proper comments. So let's do this. And.
And. Okay, well, we, uh, we discussed the, the proposed airport budget for two thousand twenty-three at our November nine workshop. Uh, and it's, uh, there weren't a lot of, a lot of changes in that and, uh. In the, in the proposed budget from, from two thousand twenty-two. And so, uh, with that, I don't take any comments or questions on the airport budget.
Particularly any comments or pass? There are no comments. So if there are no other comments to that, there's no, uh, action to be taken. So if the city airport manager.
Bob, there is action to be taken and there is, um, we need to open the public hearing with like the time and then close it. And there is action to be taken.
Oh, there's a suggestion. Is that after the public hearing?
Yes.
There is public hearings, nobody here, open eight seventeen and close it at eight seventeen and one and a half. Are there any other comments from the board?
I moved to direct staff to bring forward a city resolution recommending adoption of the two thousand twenty-three airport budget. As presented or as amended.
Second.
All favor? Opposed, hearing none. It passes. Is there anything from the manager?
Just the environmental assessments ongoing now. They're getting comments from the public. We've had several comments. About some of land purchases out there. So it's ongoing here. That is, is in the, in process right now.
With the no other business of airport boarding, closer airport boarding, real for the city council meeting for adjournment. All have a great holiday weekend.
Thank you.